The Joni's Allison Senate, it should be. It should have it on Allison.
All right, I think we're good. All right, let's call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission meeting for the Village of Marymont. This is Wednesday, January the 20th at 6:34, 5, 6:35, whatever. Oh, I said 6. I meant 5, 5:34. All right, on roll call, I'm going to call you out of order here, I guess. Shelley?
Here.
Here. Bob?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
And I'm here.
That's good.
All right, I need a motion in a second. I guess, Bob, you haven't seen the minutes, so you can abstain from this to
Aren't there five members of the Plan Commission?
Yeah, that's right. Bob Vanstone is ill and won't be with us tonight.
Okay.
How is he doing?
He's doing well, and so is Pat, the wife. I mean, they took her to the hospital.
He has COVID, you guys.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Goodness.
Well, he's on the mend. I mean, he's up and running. He's he's good. All right. Again, anybody got any questions about the minutes?
No.
All right. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the minutes from the last meeting? Bob, you can abstain.
I motion to accept.
All right, Shelley?
Second.
No, I mean, on roll call, Shelley?
Yes, I.
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 Kelly, I. All right, we'll accept those minutes. All right, a little housekeeping right here. Normally, in this being the first meeting of the year, we would, of course, you know, take nominations for the new chair. I'm not going to do that tonight because, you know, we're not all here. So we'll just postpone that to the following meeting. You know, when we'll nominate who's going to, who's going to sit his chair for the coming year. All right, so looking at the first item on our, well, like I said, I'm going to do it in this order. This is the first item on our agenda. This is the application for 65, you know, 100 Marymont Avenue. This is the to resubdivide what I think are five lots into two lots down at the tail end of Marymont Avenue. You've all seen the drawings and the diagrams, so you pretty much know what we're talking about. And I know, Bob, you had a question regarding, you know, that .6009 acres for parcel A.
Correct.
I talked with Austin. Who's the attorney at Frost Brown?
Musser.
Yeah, I talked with him today. And he said that, yes, probably the calculation does include the, and Don, you can confirm on this if you want, that that calculation does include the easement area, the sanitary sewer area. So it's the entire plat that you see there.
Yeah, actually, that wasn't my question.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But no, I was pretty sure that that calculation included all of that area just relative to the acreage that was designated for parcel B. You know, that it's twice as large. So I'm, I'm pretty sure it includes everything, everything to the property line because it normally does in a plat survey.
Yeah.
My question was, and Don, I think you had made the determination that this was, in fact, a buildable lot. And my question was, I wanted to make sure, because you're, you, you know, you're not allowed to build on easements, or you're not allowed to build on easements without a variance. And that I presume that the, what was designated as a hillside protection area was something that the owner was designating as a hillside protection area. And that, given that those are not buildable portions of this lot, that there's, that it is, in fact, I mean, I presume that it is, that there's no, there's nothing, if you can't build on those areas, there's nothing that keeps this from being a buildable lot.
Right.
So I can answer that, but are you talking about the protection area that's got the dotted lines?
Sure, and I did, I I didn't really question it so much as I just presume that the owner, the current owner is trying to put a covenant in there to protect it.
That's exactly what it is.
And I presume that that's where those large trees are, where the swale is now, Shelley?
Correct.
Yeah. And so if that, if that, in fact, is not to be built on, and you can't build on the easements, I just wanted some, I want to make sure before we charge forth, that, in fact, that this does meet all the other requirements for a buildable lot.
You know, what remains is greater than 6750 square feet. And so by definition of a Marymont code, that leaves it as a buildable lot. So what remains, if you take that swale section out, and just leave the rest of the property, is still greater than 6750.
Okay. Including those areas that are excluding those areas, and maybe I don't, maybe the code doesn't define this, excluding the easement areas?
They're not building, they're not building on any of the easements.
Right, and I, well, yeah.
They would have to get that approved.
Right.
I don't think you can build on an easement.
Right.
Not on a sanitary sewer easement.
Well, you can if you get a variance and
No, they're not.
Let's you, but
They're not.
Yeah.
Trust me.
I did have a question about the, I assume that the hydrant that was that I saw on that property is within that easement? Does anyone know?
I'm pretty sure it is. It's on that, yes.
It's not designated on that.
Yeah, well, it is, well, it does, no, it's not designated on here specifically.
You know, Shelley, it was my memory that that hydrant, Bob and I were talking about this, doesn't that hydrant fall in that, one of those protection areas?
No.
No?
Do you know what? I don't think it does. I'm pretty sure it sits right past where the lot ends for the current property and in that area of the easement. But again, you know, they're not going to, they're not building anywhere even close to the fire hydrant.
And I just presume that it's probably where the easement makes a right angle turn. That's but
Quite a bit before that.
Because it's not, because it's not really, well, because the property lines are partly staked, I couldn't get a good reckoning of it.
Yeah.
Well, as I said, I checked with Chief Feitner on that, and that hydrant doesn't show on any hydrant map currently within the village, so I'm sure it's not active. So.
It's not active now. The only, I mean, the utility company would have the right at some point to make it active or
Yeah.
I mean, that, whoever, whoever the homeowner is for that parcel, I mean, it's something they would have to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, as long as they do their due diligence and know what they're buying into.
Okay, but I mean, I don't think it currently works any kind of interference. Correct, Shelley?
Yeah.
Correct.
And, and is there, there's nothing in the the code? These are private covenants, I presume, both the view protection area and the resource protection areas. Those are just private covenants for whoever would buy the property. I mean, they're not enforceable by the village.
I would assume so.
I mean, they would only be enforceable if you know, the new property owner decided to build in one of those areas in the in the, or actually, some of it is, I guess, the that parcel B not build in their view protection area as well.
Right.
But those are, I mean, that's not anything the village would enforce.
I don't think so. Besides that, I mean, it would, Bob, it would not be desirable. I mean, what would you build there? It goes down the hillside, right?
Oh, well, it goes down, well, where the, you mean, where the view protection area, or is the resource?
The resource, the resource.
Yeah. No, I, it was just a question.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Yeah.
Not
That's okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any, I'm just trying to understand it. I don't have any really objections to this. I just wanted to understand it, just if there's anyone that knows, I mean, I'm presuming these are private covenants that would be, you know, part of the legal agreement to sell the property.
Property, yeah, I would think.
And that the village, the village hadn't stepped in and said, well, if you're going to do this, you know, you have to, you have to protect these trees, you have to protect this viewpoint. I just wanted to
None of it was from the village. All of these things were to, from everything I know, was to protect both parties, to protect the current lot and the future lot. You know, they don't want a shed built, like, they don't want a shed built right there in that easement, you know, where the, where the striped lines are.
Right.
You know what I mean?
That's what I'm saying, that it's
It's, it's, I mean, I feel like what they did was to protect everybody, everyone, and the views, and, you know, to make this house so that it's, you know, not going to be, you know, probably not that. You know, because the, you know, did you walk down there, Bob?
I did.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it goes down a hill. It's very similar to the house, the, the modern house that's built behind the hind walls, but much further back.
Right. And the, so I'm presuming that, and the, and the current owner of the property lives in, on parcel B, correct?
He doesn't live there anymore, but it's being rented right now.
So he, but he owns it?
Yeah.
And I'm presuming that, is he going to, this is just probably a matter of curiosity, does he intend to maintain ownership of that property?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay. But if he doesn't live there, it's
He's gone back and forth about it.
Yeah, if he doesn't live there, it's more likely that he really, long-term intends to sell it. And, and he'll, I assume he'll sell it with these particular covenants, these view protection covenants.
Right.
In parcel B.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, so are we all good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, so I need a motion, and Shelley, why don't you go ahead and make it since you're so good at?
I am. Oh, so what's my motion that we're going to, we agreed to separate the five plats into two plats?
Into two, yes.
And we may need
That's your motion?
We may be actually two motions. We may need one to consolidate it, which is what has to be done in order to separate it. It has to be consolidated into one plat, and then it has to be divided into two plats.
Perfect.
Okay, so refrain, the first motion is to consolidate?
The first motion would be to consolidate?
Yes. All right, let's pass on that one.
Into one plat.
I need a second.
Second.
All right. All right, Shelley, I'm going to ask you to refrain from voting on this.
Oh, okay.
Hey?
Is, are you involved with this, Shelley?
Do you know what? I was involved in them getting the street vacated so that Chip could, you know, so that it made the lot a better lot. So I was involved with the village. It's been a year now in getting that street vacated.
But is, but is Bill, is Bill insinuating he thinks you're going to be the Realtor for selling one of the other of these?
Oh, you mean, one of the, you know what? I had the house listed when Chip had it listed before, and I don't know what's going to happen next. And I don't even know if the other houses, if the lot's going to get listed, so
Okay.
I guess there's always the possibility, but I'm happy to
I just think, you know, past and prior involvement here, I want to be on the safe side here, that's why I'm going to ask you
I'm totally fine with that.
We have enough.
So Bill?
I'm just here for information.
That's right.
Three is a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Rich?
I made the motion. Does Kelly want a second?
I think we had a second. I believe we had a second. This is
All right.
All right, Bob?
Yes.
I, Kelly?
I.
I, I. All right, so now the, we have, we've had the motion to consolidate. Now we're going to have a motion to
I'll make a motion then to divide this single parcel into parcel A and B as described in the the survey provided by the applicant, survey prepared by McGill Smith Punction. In fact, the first one probably should also refer to the consolidation plat that we were provided by the applicant. And then this also would be the plat of survey dated 11/18/2020, provided by the applicant.
I guess, I don't see the date, but I guess you do, so, all right.
So I enlarged my, I enlarged.
Okay, okay. Oh, no, I see, oh, yeah, I see it. I see it. Okay, so that's the motion. I'll second. Bob, on roll call?
Yes.
Yes, I say aye. Kelly? Aye. All right, those motions passed. We will consolidate and subdivide. Sounds good. All right, now moving on to 6984 Crystal Springs, we have an applicant before us who would like a couple of setback variances. You've all have you, I'm assuming you've all seen the drawings. Their drawings are well-prepared. Mr. Gunderson, would you like to tell us a little bit about it? Um.
I don't think Tom is there, is he?
Is, I don't know if we have anybody in the waiting room or not. Do we have anybody in the waiting room?
We do.
Oh, we do.
Okay.
Is it Mr. Wilcox? Yes, it is.
Yes, can you hear me?
All right, Mr. Wilcox, why don't you, why don't you brief us on this?
Okay, well, this is a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Two-story addition on the back of the house, master suite over a, oh, a hearth room, more or less, along with a full kitchen renovation and a new back entry. Fixing their stairway to make it nicer, more gradual, and also add an elevator. Trying to keep in, in the same style exactly as the existing house, trying to make it fit in with the house and with the neighborhood, for sure. And the problem is that their, their east property line is at an angle to the, to the house. And we need a little bit of, two little, little variances in order to build the addition like we want to. Trying to squeeze it as much as possible to make that variance as small as possible, but we still need it a little bit, as you can see in the site plan.
Yeah, yeah, we see it. Are you also asking for a variance for that air conditioning compressor, or is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's
That is sitting in the setback itself.
Sitting in the setback as well, right, okay. All right. You've all seen the drawings, you've seen the plans?
Yes.
Yes. I, I have some questions.
Okay.
So I, I'm not sure. I don't see any impediments to building this respecting the setback line. So I'm wondering if you could, could just enlighten us as to why this all couldn't be contained within the existing setback lines?
Okay, well, it starts over at the stairway, trying to line that up and make that a, a straight shot, more or less, from the back porch through into the house. We're changing it. It's a U-shaped stairway. Now we're changing it to a straight stairway for better access down to the basement and up to the second floor. And that's where everything started, and then going over adequate space to, to get a decent-sized hearth room attached to the kitchen itself. To be honest, the addition actually started in line with the east wall of the house, and pulled it back about seven inches to the west, which is as much as I feel was warranted. Now, let's see, and then upstairs, it follows the lines of the upstairs rooms.
Yeah, I guess for me, I still don't understand why it couldn't respect the existing setbacks.
Well, it would be too small.
What would be too small?
The hearth room and the master bedroom.
Why would, why would it be too small? Why? Why can't you just reposition it or reconfigure it?
Well, we can't reposition the whole addition because then that messes up the stairway and the elevator and how that's all working. Missing existing windows and keeping in line, keeping the existing stairway line, the existing stair hall. That limits us. We can't go any farther west than that to make things line up.
I guess I, well, I still don't understand how that confines you to you know, on the east side to not be able to respect the setback line.
Oh, just making an adequately sized hearth room that's in line with the kitchen.
And is the hearth room what you're, what you say is the keeping room?
The keeping room, exactly, yes, I'm sorry, keeping room.
So. And
And also the master bedroom above of adequate size, comparable to the existing bedroom sizes up there.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I just, I guess I don't agree with you that that couldn't be, the plan couldn't be resolved to respect the existing property, the existing setback lines.
Well, it would have to come in about two feet, well, two feet orthogonally at the angle. I think it's 1.3 feet.
Did you, you, did you know the setback lines were there from the get-go?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, you just decided to to design over them?
Well, we're keeping in line with the house. We're trying to make this economical, too. To, I mean, one way to approach it would have been to build an addition at the same angle as the property line, which would have been expensive and, you know, difficult framing-wise.
And why is that? Why is it expensive?
Because you're not framing orthogonally. All of a sudden, you've got these angles coming into the existing house. It's a lot more labor-intensive to make that work right.
I wouldn't, I think that would be a huge negative, just as a Realtor point of view, to have it at an angle. Like, the addition at an angle. I'm just, that's just
Well, and, and one of the original, you know, charges that the owners put to me, and I totally agree with, is to make it, you know, match the house. You know, this is supposed to look like it's an original Marymont house, and it wouldn't have had an angle like that, you know, would have built, been built, you know, pretty much as it's designed. So that's, you know, that was a major impetus behind the design here.
Does that house have an existing tile roof or terracotta roof of some kind on it?
Yes, it does.
And you're going to continue that?
We're going to match that, exactly.
Match that. And some effort to match the brick, I would assume?
Yes, yep. And, and if you look at the house, I mean, the back elevation, the north elevation is, mimics the front elevation. That's where that design came from.
Right.
You can choose from the house, both in all materials and style and form, and that's, you know, that's why it's not at an angle.
Well, and I don't think it has to be at an angle for it to work. I think it just needs to shift.
You know, the one thing that, that I noticed is the house to the right of you, the setbacks are larger than they would normally be because of the angle. So the houses are going to still be, I don't know the exact measurement of
Yes, you're right.
So to me, I mean, when I looked at that, to me, I felt better about what you're trying to do because of the way that the other house sits on the lot.
Right, I agree.
You mean the house to the east, Shelley's, is what you're talking about?
Yes, the one, I mean, on, I'm looking at it, it's to the right. I mean, I'm looking at it from the street.
Yeah, it's orthogon, it's orthogonal.
Yeah, so I just mean, like, it, you know, the setback is a lot smaller towards the street, and it gets wider where, at the place that we're talking about, where he's asking for the variance. So that, I mean, a lot of this is all due because of this angled lot, which is obviously most, you usually don't have to deal with it in Marymont. Most of our lots are pretty straight. So this is actually, you know, the space between the houses is more than the norm.
Yeah, there, there is a substantial fence there as well.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's remaining.
Yeah, and that'll be remaining, and of course, that'll help hide the air conditioning compressor, I guess, as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Was there any response from the, those owners?
Yes. Yeah, we, in fact, we have, I believe, one of the adjacent property owners here now, and she would probably, I'd like to give her an opportunity to speak.
Are we doing that now?
Okay. No, we're doing it now. She wants to speak. Ma'am, could you state your name and?
My name is Linda Salma, and I was not giving
We can't hear her, Bill.
Hold on, hold on, one minute.
My name is Linda Salma, and I received the letter about today's meeting, but I did not receive any drawings. So I thought my property was impacted by this, but from what I've gathered from this conversation, it seems like this addition is on the other side.
Correct.
Is that, Bill?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So I was going, I'm here mainly because of receiving this letter, but I'm not even sure if I'm if I'm impacted in any way by this situation.
Yeah. Your, your property is here, and the addition is on this side.
Okay.
On the east side, so you'll be on this side. And again, I know you have another fence on that side, so the impact to you is virtually
Okay.
Not existent, really, yeah.
That's fine. I was just, you know, like I said, I caught the letter and thought this should be
I'm sorry you didn't, go ahead and get the copies of this, but
Well, it doesn't, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you good? Okay, guys, hold on one sec.
Well, back.
Let me move around. You're welcome to keep them if you would like, yeah, sure.
So the, the east side property owners have been notified and they have not responded?
They have not responded, and Ruth Sturtz, who is the corner property to the back, she's been notified, and she's not, I'm assuming if they have objections, they would have, you know, said something.
Tom Wilcox, have you had any discussions with the east side property owners?
Or have the No.
And the, have your clients had any discussions with them?
I am not sure.
Yeah.
That's a yes.
Yeah, yes, I have.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Bob. I'm one of the owners of the property that we're requesting the variance on. I have talked to Andy, myself personally, and let him know that what we were doing, and he didn't have any problems with it. I talked to him last week, as a matter of fact. Andy, I'm Bob. I'm Bob Day.
No, I'm
Andy.
Andy.
Andy Sheger.
Sheger.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And I didn't talk to Kathy, but I think Andrew, Andy did.
You're not saying he speaks for her?
No, well, actually, no. No comment.
Quite the opposite would be true.
That's true.
Just, just joking.
No, no comment.
Shelley knows.
I knew, I do know.
Okay, okay, we good?
Thanks, Bob.
All right, Bob. Bob Rich, other than your objections to the architect's design?
Right, my, my objection is, is that I, I really think that, especially since Mr. Wilcox is a professional architect, this, this could have been designed within the constraints of the existing setbacks. So, I mean, that's, I mean, there's nothing, I don't think that there's a financial burden to compose it such that it would shift over and be within the setback lines, so.
Maybe I need to do a better job of explaining. You know, I said start at the stairway. Actually, start a little bit west of that to the living room window. We're trying to avoid that. So we've got the elevator, we've got the, the back door from the new back porch. It's a straight shot to the stairway so that you can carry things in and go straight through the house that way. And that's, that's where that wall of the keeping room, the west wall of the keeping room was generated, and then we went over 15 feet, which is really only about 14 and 13 and a half feet on the inside, which is, is small as I feel we should make that keeping room and the master bedroom above. So that's, that's where, that's, that's how the east wall of the addition was generated, working from the west, as small as we could make it reasonably.
And my opinion is, I mean, I'm not going to attempt to redesign this for you, but that the the keeping room actually could shift to the west if the door were to shift to the west. I mean, there's room in what you label as the back hall. It may not be a straight shot, but that it could shift over and, and be within the setback line.
Well, then the structure, well, that whole, that's a bearing wall, and that lines up with the beams that are going alongside the eastern edge of that stairway. That's a whole beam line going across there that holds up the roof and the floor.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not an existing bearing wall.
It will be in the, in the existing house. Yeah, well, we can't, we can't put bearing halfway through the stairway. It's got to be in line with the east edge of that stairway.
No, I guess, well
Otherwise, we'd have a column, right?
Maybe we're, maybe we're not talking about the same position, but I'm saying that the, well, I'm not going to attempt to redesign it for you. It's just That the, uh, well, I'm not gonna attempt to redesign it for you, it's just, I mean, I. I could do an overlay on this and. And shift it over, and I think it could all work, but it may. Involve a little bit more. Uh, introspection into the design than just shifting it over. Um, I just. I, I've spent a lot of my career, uh, respecting setback lines, so, um, I think it. Probably starts a little earlier in the process than, uh. Redesigning it during a variance hearing, so.
Alright, I, um. We'll note your objections, um, anyone else have any objections about this? Shelley?
No.
Shelley, Kelly?
No.
Okay, alright, um. So I'm gonna need a motion then, and. Can, can we consolidate, can we consolidate the three?
Yeah, you don't, I don't, you, you can just, you can accept. The design as it's designed, if you want a motion. You just have a motion to accept the design as it is.
As it is.
Respecting the, you know, the variances that he's requested for. The air conditioning unit and the two violations on it, I mean, it's, it's all, it's all violating the same setback line.
Yeah, right, right.
So either one motion will take care of the whole thing.
Alright. I'm assuming we don't wanna make.
Don't look at me to make the motion.
Kelly, why don't you go ahead, make the motion?
I will make the motion to accept the sign as presented.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, alright, um, Shelley. On rule call?
Aye.
Aye, Kelly?
Aye.
Aye, Bob?
Uh, nay.
Nay, alright.
And.
Eyes, three eyes, one nay.
Normally, uh, normally in the motion, I mean, uh, that you would, you know.
I know.
Granting a variance, you would.
Yeah, based on. Right.
In what the hardship is that you're granting the variance for.
Exactly.
That it's not an arbitrary. Grant of the variance.
I don't have my codebook in front of me, but I do know what you're talking about. I think it's, um.
Well, there has to be, there has to be a hardship reason that you're granting the variance, you can't just. You know, say, you know, we, we like it, it's nice, we think you're nice people.
Right, right.
And, you know, so you get a variance.
Yeah, um, if you would like, Bob, we'll go get the codebook so we can cite it.
Well, I'm, I'm saying. Shelley, are you the secretary?
She'll cite it in the minutes.
Just, yeah, just make sure that when you. Wrap up the paperwork. Cite that.
Yeah, it'll go in. Alright, moving on. The last applicant is from. Naughty Nat, L, LC, I'm, I'm hoping I'm saying that right, it's very hard to read.
Naughty Natty.
Naughty Natty.
Naughty Natty.
No, naughty in what regard?
I think that refers maybe to the sin.
In any event, I'm considering this to be an incomplete application. We do not have enough information here to basically render an opinion on this tonight. Um, there's several things that are, you know, kinda missing here, um. Relative to our own code, there's that common facilities agreement, and relative to the Ohio revised code, there's the condominium declaration. And, and any number of other things. Um, there's, uh, there's no statement as to that party wall rating, I think Bob touched on this. That party wall or the common walls, the separating walls in there have to have some kind of a fire rating on them, is that correct, Bob?
Well. I, I, I would like to, uh, I know or be confident that in the conversion to a condominium. That the party walls meet the current building code requirements for party walls between zero lot line residences.
Correct, yeah, correct. Well, we don't have that, we really don't have anything on this, uh, we.
We have a representative from the.
No, we do not, and Don has, Don has been attempting to correspond with, I think, the attorney, correct, Don?
That's correct.
And, uh, we've not really had a good response to this yet. So either, either we would just, I guess we've got two ways to go here, either we just basically withdraw the application, or we just table it. Pending, you know, further. Information.
Well, I agree with you, I think it's incomplete.
Okay.
Well, yeah, was anybody else on the commission when they did this to the building next door? Cause you know, there's a building. Right, well, it's, you know, it's the one that's right across from, like, the, um, the York's driveway.
Yeah, yeah. When they did the conversions there?
Yeah, I mean, it was very complicated, what they, I mean, they had to, I mean, I just remembered there were a lot, there was a lot of information that had to be. You know, satisfied, um, so I was really surprised to see this as well.
Okay.
Well, well, from, from the village standpoint, if, if there were an issue, for instance, if the property were not being maintained. Or maybe there was a fire in the, the building, and, you know, the, and the, and the village had to deal with the aftermath of the fire and the rebuild. And, and there was, and the village needed to actually go to someone because of the issue with the building or lack of maintenance or whatever. You know, there needs to be a, a vehicle, there needs to be a legal vehicle to say this is the ownership entity. And the ownership entity has responsibility, you know, in order to repair or maintain the property.
Yeah.
So, you know, without, without seeing that, it's incom, and that's what the. Common facilities agreement and the party wall agreement would.
Yeah, would they, right.
Uh, Bob, just for, just for the, the, the kicker, um. I, I think that's probably, u- unless we're gonna say the current owner. Would have all those things in place for themselves, I think that what they intended to do was convert it. And sell it. And so, I, I don't think there was any. Intention of having any of these documents completed. Before they sold it, only because there's no owners.
Well, but they would need, in order to sell it, Don. They need a, they need an, uh, an ownership agreement, in other words, you have to set up an entity because it's. The, the shell of the building is jointly owned.
Right.
So, and the, and it's the responsibility of all the owners, all the condominium owners within that unit. To maintain the building, so if the building needs a new roof. Even though on the ground floor, you know, you may not have a roof over you, you still have. You know, ownership responsibility to replace the roof when the roof needs to be replaced, or. You know, when, if the retaining wall that's there, if it be, if it needs repair or something like that. You know, it's the responsibility of the, the condominium entity. To repair that, and each owner has a, you know, a, a share of ownership within that. So there really has to be, there has to be a legal structure. Since it's one building. To, to make it a condominium complex.
Yeah, the, the lawyer created that legal document. And we actually just got a copy of it today. Uh, but it's unsigned, you know, it's just there.
Yeah. So it needs, it needs to be, I mean, they need to create that legal entity. And, and, and that needs to be part of this application, and it, so we need to understand. Eh, eh, plus, if you're communicating with the lawyer that represents the owner. I would want some kind of survey that. To know that the building. From a building's code standpoint. Meets the current requirements for zero slot line separation, that the, the rating on the party walls are sufficient. To meet the current codes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it, it could be the case, but, you know, there's no guarantee with it being an apartment building now that, that it is.
Right. Alright, let's have a motion to table. Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Second. Shelley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we'll table that. Don, you can correspond back with these folks and.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that this is taken care of before we try to put it before another meeting.
Before we come again, yeah, okay.